Everyone, if you're willing, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the solid state, one nation under God, indivisible, with every name and justice. Thank you very much. More call, please.
Mrs. Pack, here. Mr. Norris, here. Mrs. Duff, here. Mrs. Spain, here. Mr. Justice, Mrs. Noel, here. Mrs. Shulman, here. Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Ombre.
Here. Notice was properly posted?
Properly posted.
Thank you. And before public participation, I am now making the motion to move eight point two review approved, the 2025 commencement date and time prior to public participation, be moved to, to be moved now at this time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, we're going to talk about the 2025 commencement.
Before we get into public, number one, WIAA puts out its calendar three years in advance. We approve our calendar roughly eighteen months in advance. Somewhere along the line, something got missed. I don't want to spend a bunch of time trying to point fingers and blame things at people. I do need to share with the board, because I push going through proper process. The track coach spoke with the athletic director, she spoke with the high school principal, and she spoke with the superintendent. None of us have the authority to change a board adopted calendar, thus we're at the board. It's a recommendation of the administrative team, through conversations with Mr. Vassie, Emily, and myself. We'd like to recommend moving the 25 commencement from Friday evening to Sunday at one o'clock.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, it's done, it's moved. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll take any public participation if you wish to. Thank you for coming and thank you for your support.
If you want to say something, you can.
Yes, and I do want to say thank you for letting us know. Thank you so much. State your name and let Tom let you reside in, please.
So, good evening, board members. If you don't know me, my name is Stephanie Strasberg. I am very raised here in Monaca, graduated Lakeland, and I'm the head track and field coach. I want to first thank you for allowing us on your agenda, your time in reading, listening, and discussing comments and points of view regarding our request for a compromise and graduation date change. I have sent you my comments, as well as many comments from the community and our support you emailed earlier. I realize there's a lot to discuss, well, maybe discuss later or from previously, with many details that can be affected, as many of our student athletes work even harder within their academics so that they may continue with their extra activities. I know all of us will greatly appreciate your thoughtfulness in keeping the kids along with their academic and physical achievements and their celebrations of each at the center of your decision. At this time, I would like to invite anyone willing to speak, to come forward. I guess I will start with.
It's passed.
It was just changed.
It's passed. They changed.
But you were inviting comments, or?
Yeah, if everybody wants to speak, yes.
It's already been changed.
It's done.
I know, it's been changed. If anybody wanted to speak, certainly.
I'll come up for a minute here. Most of you know me, I'm Kevin Fitzpatrick from Monaca. I was taught here for twenty-two years, was a track coach here for a lot longer than that. Thoroughly enjoyed my time here at Lakeland. I just want to, you know, kind of make you aware, again, those calendar things are out there three years in advance. I know that next year, and I know you have the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar on the agenda, next year you'll have the same thing with, if you're looking at a day other than a Sunday. But I know I take academics very, very, they're very important to me. I think that's reflected in what my children achieve when they're here at Lakeland, that's reflected in what the teams that I coached achieved while they were here at Lakeland. And so I don't, I don't take lightly moving any dates. What I think we need to be able to, as I said in my letter that Uncle Moshe read, we need to be able to celebrate both athletic achievements and academic achievements. And by allowing those two events to be on separate days, I mean, I think that happens, whether it's for track and field or softball or any other spring sport. So, thank you.
Thank you. And just so the audience knows, the draft twenty-five, twenty-six calendar for next year has commencement on Sunday at one o'clock.
We do learn.
Thank you. Do you want to say thank you?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Any other public participation that's not related to the year that I have on the calendar, would love to speak. We will move forward. Next, our board commendations. Next, we have some board commendations relative to our girls' state swim team. Congratulations to a fantastic year. So, at this time, I would like to provide you with a certificate recognizing your achievement for your dedication and hard work in the following accomplishments of representing our school at the highest level at Wisconsin State Swimbeast. So, congratulations, ladies. This one is to Evelyn Collins. Congratulations. Next is Olivia Nichols. Next is Casey Wise. And last is Darren Smolinski.
I just want to recognize these girls. Two of them are freshmen, one is a sophomore, one is a junior. This is Olivia's third appearance at state. They qualified in two relays. Olivia also qualified in two individual events, which she podiumed for in both of them, and she got two varsity records for our team. So, congratulations, girls.
Thank you very much. Next is informational items. Any correspondence?
No.
Next is the student board representative report.
Hi, I'm Sina Peterson. I'm the senior representative.
I'm Olivia Nichols, junior representative. Winter sports are in full swing, and many teams have multiple games and meets going on during this week. The new trimester has started with new classes. Students have gotten settled in with their new schedules and classes. National Honor Society hosted their annual blood drive this past week. It was very successful, and many students signed up and filled all the donor spots available. The choir students held their ferals in the comments, and it was a success. Many people attended, and they got the opportunity to see what the choir has been working on. Many members of our student council recently attended the WAFC Fall Leadership Tour. They learned many new leadership training, networking, and breakouts to bring back, to bring back to school here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the ladies? Okay, thank you. District administrator, report.
Just some updates, update on gymnastics. Had a conversation with our youth gymnastics coaches. When we dropped the high school program, right away the parent in Iowa's, what happens to youth program, we have a ton of kids involved. Through conversation with them, we're not changing anything with our youth program. It's going to stay exactly the way it is and has been for a while. If we have a gymnastic program that doesn't make any kind of resurgence, I was upfront and shared, then we would start to have a conversation about what are we doing with facilities and youth gymnastics. But they were very open to that and kind of understood where we were at. We should have a large group post up in the eighth period that's coming up. Nice thing about Lakeland, a poor thing about Lakeland, they have lots of choices once they get to high school, and students in younger grades can kind of do everything, and then they have to make some decisions as they get a little bit older. So, we'll move forward with that. Volunteer recognition process, I wanted to talk about a little bit. This came up in a discussion, I think with Heidi. Volunteers, my perception, the district administrator approves the volunteers. It's also nice to know who are the volunteers from a board perspective that are working with the kids in the building, especially if they're with coaches, and seeing our kids on a time-going basis. As Lisa and I have talked, anytime we have a volunteer in the district, we do run a criminal background check, and if they're driving vehicles, we also do a driver's license check. So, Lisa keeps track of all of those that we've done the background checks on. So, it is possible to create another report, but it's also creating another report for Lisa to share as far as what the volunteer would be doing. I don't want to get into administrators and board and board approving volunteers, because that can get very time-consuming. Are you approving the volunteer for the one-day field trip? Are you approving the volunteer in where you, or for the full-time coaching that they do all season long for four to five months? And where do you draw the line? And I don't like the idea of separating, saying, well, if you're a coach, you should be approved, but if you're just working with kids in the classroom, we're not going to approve you. So, we just talked about creating a list of volunteers, of just anybody that's a volunteer.
Question.
Questions, comments?
Well, just a question, or is that volunteer coach also going to have to also take the first aid background, or the first aid? We're not requiring them to, that I know of.
Yeah, I don't believe the WI requires volunteer coaches to volunteer that. And so, I think we follow WI guidelines.
How does that compare to what we have in our policy? It doesn't, in our policy, it doesn't say anything relative to the volunteers that they have to be approved.
It says volunteers are approved, but it doesn't say that for.
Okay.
And it does, our volunteer process, policy talks more about, a volunteer should be recognized. Volunteers have to go through a criminal background check if they're driving students and if they have the driver's license. It's more about the process of becoming a volunteer, less about, is the board approved, is administration approved?
Let me explain to both of you.
Oh, we just.
Court confused us, what I did. We got from Emily, the winter sports coaching, and all the coaches were listed on there, whether they got paid or volunteered. And sitting at a basketball game, there was a separate person on the bench. And I knew the person, but I didn't remember approving that person as a coach for one of our teams. So, in checking, I contacted Steve and said, this person's on our bench, he's never been approved, you know, he's in the locker room with the girls, you know, do we, we need to get him on here to get him approved, because he was never listed in our coaching of who all was coaching what teams. So, that's when I contacted Steve and said, we got to get him here if he's sitting on our bench, because some of our volleyball coaches that were volunteers weren't able to go to practice until we approved him. But this person was sitting on the bench, and I knew we had to approve him, and I wanted to make sure we were covered. So, I contacted Steve.
That's what generated the conversation, because Heidi's perception, the board approves volunteers, mine was, or doesn't approve volunteers, that's a different conversation. Post. That's why it's here.
So, it was just, the person wasn't listed as one of our coaches, and it was a red flag for me going, oh, we didn't approve him. Not that I have a problem with him at all. I just wanted to make sure we were covered.
So, volunteers don't hit the consent agenda at all?
I wouldn't put them on any normal consent agenda. The last two districts I've been in, I've never seen volunteers approved at the board level. Every district functions a little differently.
We had in the past, when they were coaches, advisors, or clo, advisors, they were listed as, we were notified, they were more than just coming to volunteer in the classroom. And that's when I went through all the old reports and knew this person wasn't there. So, it's a change in what we're doing that we just need to approve.
So, I'm sorry, I guess initially when you told me that story, I was assuming that they were just volunteering, but not as a coach or assistant coach, just a separate volunteer. But in this case, you're saying, any coach, assistant coach, any volunteer at all?
A volunteer coach, not a paid coach.
Okay, so paid coaches will still go through.
Still come through.
Okay, perfect.
And paid coaches have to go through the WI training for care and prevention. So, there's a whole list of criteria that's a little bit different. But they're getting paid to do that, as opposed to a volunteer who is just coming in one day at a time.
Is that a dollar contract? No money.
Thank you.
So, I guess I don't need a list from you. If you have a list of volunteers, I, I don't need to see it. I was more concerned that there was a change in something we did and needed to be aware of it. But just adding to the coaching report activities, if, any quads, if we have volunteers that are helping to assist, just that their names are there so you know they're there.
And all of our volunteers, we do do the criminal background checks before they start working again. So, that's almost it.
Can I ask, what's the turnaround, Lisa? I get it.
Well, I run them every day. So, what's hard for me is when you say volunteer, every day there's like a bus pay visitor, a driver. It's hard to differentiate between, like, a volunteer coach for a sport is easy, but like, if you want to see anyone who has a background, they're all volunteers.
So, let's say, for example, there's a teacher, they want to bring in a guest speaker, because they're coming out for a long weekend, and they're going to be here this coming Friday, and I want to have that person speak to my classes. Can I get a turnaround time of two days for background check typically?
Is that a volunteer?
Yeah, yeah, it's a volunteer, it's a guest speaker.
I, I would not run a criminal background check on a guest speaker, because they are being supervised by you in the classroom. They're never alone or with the kids.
Okay.
And they're just in, they're coming in and speaking. It's almost like military instructors, but they don't get background checks.
And upon checking into the building, they run through our Raptor system, which scans their ID, which would pull up any, anything that would be a flag as well, that have recently come through, through their, through their ID that comes in the Raptor system.
As you know, like tonight, they're going to have some business people come and be judges for your event, and they, there might not be an instructor in that room. So, but they would come in and get checked and, okay. I'm just kind of, I was just kind of curious as to turnaround time, in case.
Do you have, will those judges scan that system tonight?
Tonight, no. And so, like, that's something to me, whereas I'm hearing this right now, something that was, I was never made aware of, right? That we have people coming into the building tonight, right? So, that would, that's like a follow-up for me that needs to happen now.
Okay.
Sorry. No, but thank you, thank you, right?
Something we catch.
Yeah.
And Levi and Eddie and Oliver, and then there's so much stuff that happens in the building. We don't have the clue.
Oh, sure.
None of you. And we should.
Levi, shouldn't your staff be telling you if, if they've got people coming in, they should be alerting you?
Yes.
Common sense.
Okay, next one is WAASB attendance. Who was going down? Were you one?
I was.
Oh, no. Lisa?
And Sean.
And Sean. We're hosting a consortium breakfast on Wednesday morning from seven, eight-thirty. Please join us. All of the other, for, for Ls that will be down there, we're going to invite the board members and administrators to join us. Just to chat. Facilities use process. Been working with Emily on this, and this should have been the practice all along, and it's gotten to be misunderstood, I guess is the best word. Anytime we have community or the general public in the building, we should have a staff member here that has access to keys, AEDs, those sort of things are out. So, that's something I'm going to push hard on, taking sure that happens. And it came up over Thanksgiving break, when one of the youth programs wanted to use part of the facility, and our custodians were not here on a specific date, and they just wanted to come in and use the facilities. He said, no, that created some problems. So, that also generated some other conversation. Again, great conversation with the Lakeland Swim Club. Emily and I met with them, had good conversations about our expeditions for locker rooms. Not going to charge them, as they're also working with you, that will eventually be ours. But again, they don't have keys to the building. There should be a staff member, whether it's an evening custodian, or a high school swim coach, or somebody else here in the facility when they're in the building.
So, is that a facility used for?
It would be a facility used. And she's been working with Emily on that.
Okay.
And basically what happened, there was some dates and times where they had wanted to practice over Thanksgiving break, that all of our custodians had moved to days over the break. They wanted to come in the evening. Emily said, no, you can't come in.
Okay.
So, that was the, kind of the prompt of action. Any questions on that?
That's all I want to talk about.
Okay, next, the board agenda planner. Reports.
Before we get into the trimester report, I noticed your annual review of the board agenda planner. I'd like to take that back to our policy committee and have some conversations about dates and months. I think some of them could be aligned better, having a conversation with Katie about, are you going to be ready for this last month as opposed to this month? And where the reports line up. A review of administrative contracts was on one of them. That should be in December, and just kind of working on shifting some of those things.
Very good, thank you. Next is the trimester report.
So, one of the, one of the many changes that has come about as we switch to trimesters is that norm, normally, we would be, sorry, normally, we would be sharing data with you at the mid-year after the semester, and now we'll have this opportunity at the end of each trimester. And as our leadership team came together this last week to review the data that we have been collecting and think about our goals and our continuous growth plan, it was very evident that the change in trimesters gave us like this love-hate feeling about data, because there are some, now some inconsistencies in the data that we've been tracking, not only because of a different period of time, but also a different number of courses in any given day. So, in terms of our attendance and tardies and all of that, it just kind of skews things a little bit. We did make some efforts to go back and pull data by month, instead of the quarter or semester versus the trimester, and we re-looked at data through a sense of percentages, and we're going to share a little bit of that with you as well. So, we made some efforts to try to give some continuity to the data, but there's still some parts where it's just going to be a little bit of a disconnect for us this year.
So, a sense of belonging is something we've talked about with you guys many times. So, for students to feel the belonging in our building, we, we really stress the relationships that they need to have. And so, this is very, something very important that the teachers work on, all the staff works on. You can see here that we have been having a rise. We are in the final one over there, we're at seventy-seven point five percent. So, our goal is one hundred percent, but almost eighty percent of students feeling like they belong here in their school community is very good progress that we've made. So, this is some data that we're very proud of.
One of the pieces of feeling a sense of belonging is where your school provides opportunities for you to be able to participate in things that interest you. We talked a little about this at the beginning of the school year, maybe the end of last year, in terms of what our data on our graduates last year told us. Our graduate data told us that only fifty percent of our students were going to a four-year college. And we have been very hard-figgered on this four-year college path for every student kind of mindset, that if I remember correctly, when I was here like thirteen years ago, that was kind of the idea, that was like, we're going to get other kid to go to college. And what we've realized is that every kid going to college is actually not a smart choice right now, because a lot of kids go to college, and at least thirty percent of the college and low four-year population drops out sometime before they graduate. And if you look at the debt that's incurred in that process, we're trying to find opportunities for that to be successful. So, in the state of Wisconsin and across the country, some of the college career and ready advocates will tell you that work experience at the high school level is a great predictor to success beyond. Sean can echo this, or it was something that he preached a ton with, with kids when he was working in this building. And our goal was to try to increase those numbers. So, we changed a little bit of how we scheduled students in our work-based learning. Rather than letting it be more random, we had students register for this ahead of time. So, when we went through registration, if you're interested in working during the school day, sign up. Even if you don't know if you have a job, sign up for that as a class right now, because we're going to work together with you, because we have businesses that want to partner with the school, that you might not know anybody that works at those businesses, or anybody there, or anything about that business, but it's a place to put a foot in the door for you. It's not, it's not amazing yet, like this number is nowhere near where we want it to be, but we increased so far from where we were at last year in overall percentage, just around six percent of our students blew already over that twelve percent mark for students involved in work-based learning. And a large portion of this, like you said, is to that early identification that students want to do this. The other portion is, is that we took a portion of Miss Hard Science Day and made it strictly for coordination of our work-based learning process. Miss Miller was doing it as like a period, as one of her FTEs last year. Steph had done it a couple years prior, but it was always kind of crammed into a bunch of work that they were doing. And so, we're going to give a little bit more dedicated time to spend on that. We have lots of process to continue to shore up on it. We have procedures that need to be followed in going through that. Our goal ultimately goes to partner with businesses that they know that they can access the school to provide resources for them, in return that the school is going to begin, that the students are going to be gaining learning experiences. One of the site visits that we did last year for the trimester schedule, we always get unintended consequences that come out of it, and they shared some great things about their work-based learning program. But they talked about the partnerships that they forged by going to the community and saying, what do you need? What do you need from our school to have students that are ready to, to serve this workforce? We have been discussing those pieces, and we're getting to the point where we're going to start having those conversations. And ultimately, what the school that we had went to, it said is that we started asking those questions to the community, and in return, the community said, well, what do you need from us to help train students so they're ready for us? And it led to this partnership between both, that the school and these businesses would partner on some of the cost of equipment to train kids in certain areas, or they would share in the procedures that they went through to train our staff to be able to teach students how to do these things. So, we're just really proud, because this number is more than just the graphic that's seen here. There's a lot of great things that are happening to provide our kids with opportunities for what they're going to do after high school.
Okay, so, obviously, we also do not want students failing classes, and that was one of the things that we focused on as we were moving into trimester schedule as well. Up here, Katie touched on this already, but we have some skewed data. But I want to, we see lower bar graphs in the failed classes, which is what we want to see here. Okay. Down here, these are, this is perhaps a slightly skewed graph, simply because fewer classes equals fewer failures, right? But if we look at the percentage of courses passed above here, we're still seeing a drop in classes that have been failed by our students, and that's great. And we will continue that movement downward, I'm sure, as teachers look into using class time to help get student support and intervention where they need it. I know a lot of teachers have been including, have been able to include immediate intervention with their students because of the longer classes. And it's, at least from my perspective, it's been really helpful. My class sizes this trimester have been smaller, and I am able to give kids more one-on-one attention than I was able to last year in the, in the semester schedule with the shorter and larger classes. So, it's been, for me personally, great, and I think the data does begin to reflect that. We are going to continue watching that to see if this is a continued downward trend, but so far, like, we, this is what we want to see. So.
Every time we present, we always say this afterwards. Sharon Bonesby teaches ELA. She's one of our English teachers for us.
Hi.
James Abellas, our director of students or people services and special education. Becky Tyler is a math teacher here at Lakeland. Katie Ryan.
Katie Ryan is Director of Teaching and Learning. We've got Massey High School Principal.
So I'm not going to talk a lot about ACT data, because this is data from last spring. But the reason that we added some additional information for you is that when, once the scores are released statewide, and we have comparisons to other districts, it's interesting for us to look at our growth from year to year in comparison to other districts. And we were able to identify that in the state, our growth from the twenty-three ACT to last spring and twenty-four, we were in the eighty-first percentile for the amount of growth that we saw in our composite score in comparison to the other districts, other high schools in the state. And then, as I was poking around on the ACT website, they have a data analysis tool that lets you look at a lot of really cool things with data, and one of those is the year-to-year change in average score nationally and how your school ranks. And we were actually in the eighty-ninth percentile for growth nationally. So that eighteen point six to nineteen point four, like, doesn't seem like a huge jump maybe, but that is a lot of growth compared to what schools typically see. So just, that's a celebration that I'm feeling good about.
Okay, so the next part is just talking specifically about the impact of the trimesters and expectations. A lot of people ask me questions, I mean, which is great, like, you know, what do you think of the trimester? How is it going? I've been here a while, so I've seen a lot of things come and go. So it's, it's exciting for me to see a change like this occur. But definitely, one thing that we all need before we can have any type of success with any type of venture is what is the expectations? So an area that we definitely addressed this year, also with the trimester, kind of sidebar of it, is expectations. We changed some of the expectations, and we were very clear and direct with students right from day one, before this, before they even stepped foot in the building, like, what were some of the new expectations that were going to be happening? And we preface it as it has to do with health and safety and a better learning environment. So two of those things definitely were student backpacks and cell phones, and those two concepts came from student and staff surveys. Like, we asked our staff, like, what, you know, what type of safety or items could we, could we make our, our day better here at Lakeland? Student learning better, student engagement better. And certainly, backpacks and cell phones were one of the hot topics from last year that were implemented as a change this year. So no students can have backpacks from the beginning of the day till the end of the day. They have to stay in their locker. And the same thing with cell phones. And you can see that my school sets clear expectations for behavior. The students said eighty-three percent, like, they knew it was a change, but they knew what the change was. And definitely, the why, it's easy when you can say it's about health and safety, like, sometimes students don't understand that, but when you talk about things in that light, or it's because we want your learning environment to be better for you and not to be distracted by that cellphone. And I have to say, I mean, there's, there's ebb and flow to it, but overall, the cellphone thing is amazing. Like, for the most part, the battle, we just don't have the battle like we used to last year. We rarely see kids with them. I mean, do they have them? Maybe, but like, we just don't have the battle. And if they do, they get taken away, and there's just very serious, again, expectations and consequences. Same thing with backpacks. So in light of that, the staff survey says, I feel safe at my school. We saw a growth in that in this, in this, when we had this survey, ninety-seven percent, because we've taken into consideration those particular parameters, which again, makes our school a safer, more productive, safe and learning environment.
Now, I'll have some more data on the trimester stuff from our student leadership team, but our student leadership team met last week on Wednesday, Wednesday. Both Olivia and Stina sit on that student leadership team, but they shared their feedback just on those two pieces as well, like the backpacks, the cell phones, that idea. Because of anybody, when we first rolled this idea out, that was least popular with, it was our student body, right? And the comments that I heard from that group were such, such powerful pieces for me, I think is, we feel more connected to each other. We actually talk to each other more as we're going through the day. It's not really an issue in any of our classes, like, you don't feel pressured that you have to keep up on anything. But one of the most powerful ones is, we've dealt with a ton of bullying and harassment type issues on, online, and this year, those numbers have drastically dropped. We have kids that are no longer in fear to eat in the lunchroom, because somebody's going to take a picture of them and post it online saying they eat funny, or they do things weird. And just from that standpoint, it's like, there seems to be a greater ease. You also don't have that competition to have to keep up with everybody else with what's going on, because you can just live that, that general pace. And so those consequences that come with it aren't really, aren't really the deterrent now, it's just that nobody's doing it really, because it's, it's dropped. We're not naive though, kids are carrying cell phones on them, we're not going through and searching or patting people down and walking to classes, but if we see somebody on a phone, we're trying to have adults take phones. And as Ms. Tyler said, like, you just don't see kids bringing them out anymore, because they know there's a harsh consequence that comes with that, and so they want to make sure as well that they're going to keep that device. So it's been a really positive in the building. A really positive, I don't know if that was the right way. Responsibility Pass. Steve had put on one of the last board updates, a clarifying on a commentary that came from somewhere in regards to Responsibility Pass and how it impacts things at our school. I'm going to show you one of the positive impacts of Responsibility Pass. First of all, what is Responsibility Pass? Responsibility Pass is, this year, we determined that our students would be able to leave the building and have an open campus during their study hall periods, if they have a study hall period. It does not mean that they can go freely though, they have to be junior or senior status, they have to have non-excused absences, unexcused tardies, they have to be in good academic standing, they have to have no behavioral issues. So what this has done is, Mr. Taylor and Mr. Reimberger have, have done a great job of combing through, along with Ms. Braden down in Student Services, combing through student requests for Responsibility Pass. And we have students that have been given the ability, because they're doing what they need to do at school, we're treating them like young adults and giving them opportunity to leave. We have seventy-three minute class periods, so they can go, get away from the school bit. I'm guessing some of them probably use their phone when they're away from school, and they don't have to follow those restrictions. But the idea behind it was, students will be accountable for their data. So if you look at twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, this is through September and November, the number of students with, with no unexcused absences, meaning that they have good acad- or they have good attendance standing. So you can pay attention to grades nine and ten if you want a little bit, but I want you to look at grades eleven and twelve. So two years ago, forty and forty-nine students at this point, forty-seven and sixty-five at this point. This year, sixty-six and a hundred and twelve. Our students are coming in and trying to clear up absences, our students are making sure they get to classes on time. Our students are being more diligent, because they want their Responsibility Pass, they don't want to lose that opportunity to have some freedom. So the consequence that, that came from that is actually a positive in, in terms of students being more responsible for their, their attendance. If you look at the freshman and sophomore classes, you actually see lower numbers, they don't get that opportunity right now, right? And so as they're, we're trying to, you know, teach them through this process, hey, if you can stay on top of these things now, you're going to build a habit that'll allow you to have Responsibility Pass when you get to that point, but they just don't, they don't know that yet, so we're trying to kind of let that lash downhill a little bit in that direction. The comment we come up with saying, well, how does Responsibility Pass impact at lunch? We've always had open campus at lunch. That hasn't changed. So our kids have had the opportunity with the similar parameters to leave at lunch, but this year, Responsibility Pass covers that same thing, so we're holding a higher accountability level to make sure, and kids are taking care of that. Before, and I hate to say this, but a lot of kids would just leave the building, and it was hard for us to make sure that we had everybody accountable, because we're trying to manage three hundred kids in the lunchroom, plus kids coming in and out of doors with, like, with that spot. And so we've had a greater ability to access that in going through that process, okay?
Can I make a sidebar comment about the Responsibility Pass? So this is what I'm finding out as teaching high-level academic seniors, who many of them have the Responsibility Pass. What I'm finding out is the sub, subbar or sub-learning that's happening from that, is the conversation when I have with them, that they have the Responsibility Pass, and when they're not, maybe doing as well in the class or performing as well. And I'll say, well, where, where are you getting help during your academic lab? And they're like, well, I don't, I have a Responsibility Pass. And I said, the part about a Responsibility Pass is learning the academic responsibility of the pass. When you go to college, or whatever post-secondary plan you have, your whole day is going to be a Responsibility Pass. You have to figure out the academic responsibility part of that pass. And if it means you have to stay in school to work and have a quiet learning environment and get help, then that's what you should do. So they're learning these adult, like, study skills as a sidebar from the Responsibility Pass.
So this is following up from the student voice, and I shared some of that in the board update as well, just to kind of bring you back to it. We asked the question straight up, so last year in our student leadership team, we talked kind of big picture, and we sat at the thirty-thousand-foot view of O'Leary, the school to go, and I told the kids this year, I'm like, we really want to make sure we're talking about things that are like in real time as well, and what's, what's on your mind? So we brought the category of trimester schedule itself, we asked them to share positives first and go through things that you liked about it. Our conversation on the positives was, was really good. Just general feeling from most of our students that were sitting at that leadership team table is like, we like the schedule, it's been really good for us. The slower pace, not feeling as rushed, is, is kind of very common throughout that, that conversation. Having less classes to manage at one time makes it a lot easier. The idea that students have work release time that's coordinated for a bigger chunk of time, so if I had one period before for work release, that was only forty-five minutes, now a one period is seventy-three, so they've been able to add a little bit more time when they can be on the job site working. The last portions here to me are what I was really hoping for through the trimester schedule was, we're having deeper discussion in class, like, we're able to engage in a topic so much more. I think it might have been Olivia that made this comment, saying like, she goes, I felt like before, the forty-five minutes, you get there, you get all your stuff, all you get ready to roll, and all of a sudden, it's like, oh, the bell's going to be ringing here shortly. Now you get to engage in the conversation a little more, you get to dig deeper into the information. The other comment that came out of this is like, the quality of our work has gone up, the quantity of our work has gone down in, in most classes. As you'll see on the other side, it doesn't happen across the board yet, and we're still working through that, but the other part is just having the ability to have a one-on-one conversation time with your teachers. At the pace that the old schedule would go, sometimes you didn't have that time, because our teachers were going full speed, and then the bell rang, and you had five minutes to sprint to your next class, and then we continued on. And kids are just getting to engage with teachers even more. We've seen a correlation, we think to that as well with our data on the student surveys, that we've, we see that the student numbers in regards to having a connection with somebody in our building have gone up. So if you have, because they have more time, there's a greater chance to connect with some of the adults in our building. Now, it still is tough for AP classes. We don't know yet what the scores are going to be at the end of the year. Our predictions, I think, going through this, based upon the information we've received from the schools we've talked about, that we weren't going to see a major change in our AP scores, but we don't know. And so that's an unknown, and kids have a little anxiety about that. Is it going to be the same? The information in AP classes, there's still a lot of information to cover, and we're still trying to work through what the balance between quality and quantity and driving of that information is. Having been an AP teacher before, in my process, I can tell you that sometimes we spend a ton of time on a topic area, and there's one question on a test for it, right? But we spent a ton of time trying to go through that, and so we're trying to balance out where we're placing emphasis in that process. The, the biggest, like, downfalls, I think, that we're seeing, that, I asked the kids, like, without giving new names, so I don't want to use it as an evaluation for the teachers, I don't want them to rat people out, I wanted, I just wanted them to share information. In the classes where you feel like it's going well, what's happening? And in the classes where you feel like it's not going well, what's happening? In the classes where it's going well, they said, a lot of interaction with each other, a lot of, lot of group projects and activities, a lot of time to talk and connect with teachers. In the places where it's not going well, some of our classes have way too much direct instruction. Too many teachers talking to us and us sitting and getting information the whole time. And as we're working on our, our process of growth for our staff, we're starting to work through this, like, what has the highest effect size on student learning? What activities do you do in class? And the research will tell us that direct instruction to the teacher has a very low effect size on student learning. And so we need to have the students engaged in that learning process, which we're working on. The other part is, is that kids, kids said that, we want to make sure our work is purposeful and that it connects to the overall objective of the class. Don't just give us assignments just to fill the time, give us assignments that have some meaning to it and some value to it. And the cool part is, is that we have students that are smart enough to recognize that, that can call it out and help us pass that along, so we can continue to grow in that area. But ultimately, the student voice, we want to continue to hear it, and so we meet on a monthly basis to try to gather some of that and work over through that process.
Okay. All right, we're going to start with the positives. Okay, so as far as from a staff perspective, the positives for the trimester schedule, I've touched on this a little bit already, but again, not only do students feel like there's time for a deeper connection, but staff feel like that as well. So even within my own classes, I feel like there's actually time to talk to kids and not only help them academically, but actually get to know them as people in my classroom. And the seventy-three minutes has allowed us to cover academic material, but also to get to know each other on a human level, which is important. The pace of classes and the, like, the pace of the day has improved, so as, you know, someone who would go from one class to the next class, and you have five minutes in between, and you're running to the bathroom to make sure that you get to the bathroom and back to your class again, it's like, it's, it's much different, the pace is slower, I feel like the transition is better for kids as well, and staff, since this is from staff perspective. But we do have the opportunity to work through things on a more qualitative level, so there are, there's time to slow down if you need to, and reteach if you need to. Sometimes within, you make that split decision within your class, and you're like, okay, we need to circle back to this, because I'm seeing that we're struggling. And we have more time to do that, rather than just pushing through. A lot of us, and I, I can speak for myself as well, but a lot of us are really excited about this change, and we recognize there's a lot more work to be done to make it as successful as it can be. And we are making some amazing changes right now, like, in the thick of it, as we go. But we also recognize that there's work to be done. One of the things I was sharing with you was the fact that I get to reteach a class for the second time immediately after I've taught it. So I'm teaching Lit and Comp 10A this trimester, and I taught it last trimester as well. So I can reflect on my teaching practices from first trimester and immediately apply those reflections to second try and make that class even better, right? And before, I had to wait a whole other year until I could apply those reflections. I would try to make myself notes and do the best that I could, but I get to immediately apply those. So that's been, I feel like, a really big benefit for me.
Some challenges that staff kind of, he alluded to, certainly significant work as we transition to and adjusting the pacing. Like, I will say to Sharon, what Sharon said, I used to say, not looking back, the eight-period day was like, you were running on a treadmill every day, and at the end of it, you got flung off the back end of it, every day. Like, you were running on a treadmill forward, and you just got flung off the back of it. And then what do you got to do the next day? Get right back on that treadmill, and what are you going to do? Get flung off the back of it. Because we were just literally sprinting and running. So the slowing down of it is amazing. The hard part is that it's a, it is an absolute complete overhaul. For, that's the person, that's what I'm, like, for me personally, is I'm overhauling my curriculum, my assessments, my learning targets, which is not a bad thing. Like, it's a very good thing to do, trust me, after twenty-eight years of teaching here, it's a good thing. And I always was good at, like, reevaluating, trying new things, but this has made me really stop and readjust a lot of things, which is a good, it's good. However, it takes time, a lot of time. And so as teaching staff, we just recognize that this year, and we just say, this is the year, it's not, this is the year we're going to do the overhauling, and then from years down, it's just going to be tweaking and modifying and making it better. But certainly, this year, there is a significant amount of work that's going into making this trimester work. Yeah, not bad, but if you're asking us, that's what it is. It's a significant amount of work this year. It's definitely a challenge we saw, again, did know till you try it, where the first trimester ended, the first trimester ended on the Friday before Thanksgiving break, and then the next trimester started on Monday and Tuesday, and we had a lot of students, right, who leave for whatever the holiday, Thanksgiving, or deer hunting, whatever the case may be. It was just really hard to end and start a new try, and only had two days into the try, and then we were gone for a break. So we're looking at ways, like, how are we going to make that different and better, right? You don't know until you, you just count out days, and you're like, yep, here's where we land. And now we know, okay, well, we can't just land like that. And we'll do better, because we know better now. Like, so much of this is, we will do better, because we will know better. Like, so much of this is we will do better because we will know better. Um, and definitely maintaining student engagement from, throughout the seventy-three minutes without falling back onto that direct instruction. It, it's easy to fall back into routine. So whereas teachers, we have to keep reminding ourselves that's not the best practice. And what can we do to not, not, not fall back on direct instruction and maintain our student engagement? Not that direct instruction doesn't have its place and time, but definitely what can we do to maintain that student engagement for the quality of learning?
So on the direct instruction note, I'm going to flip the switch for a second here. Questions on this portion, because there's a little bit more I'm going to go through that's all about school report card. So I want to open any questions you have about any of our trimester data and this, this stuff that I want.
When we have an A period day, we would have students that would take eight classes a day. Are we still seeing students taking five periods a day?
Yeah, we have a good chunk of students that are taking five classes.
And they're, they're surviving better than what you would think than, let's say, with the A period day, or I don't think so.
I, I would say that they're, that they're surviving the same, if not a little bit better, because there's just less classes. If they were taking eight, they had eight, now they definitely have five. The other part, I think, is the balance, because there's three trimesters, you might not have all of the same class. Like, with the semester schedule, if you were to take five AP classes in the year, you have five AP classes the whole year. Whereas now, because they can break some of these chunks up a little bit, um, one of the students had said in there, it was like, it was great. I had a hard trimester first trimester, but right now when I'm in the musical, it's actually, I was able to get it set up. So my, my schedule's a little bit easier during this time because I know I'm going to spend a ton more time after school here working on the, on the musical. So that was a positive.
In a situation where, where someone takes a, an AP class, first trimester and second trimester, obviously the exam is during third trimester, will there be a curriculum or a study session or anything extracurricular that will help them refocus on that topic?
Yeah, so we have a couple labs you want to talk about?
Yeah, so I, that was, trust me, when, like, this came about, like, I, I'm a real, like, my AP course is like my baby. So when we talked about this, I was like, wait a minute, like, how is this going to impact my AP course? Like, all of that, like, I had great concern, right? Um, so we talked about if there is the first and second try, what can we offer in that third try? And administration was great. And in that third try, I will have an AEAP lab, it's called. So it's an academic enhanced lab, which will be opened up for the AP support. Now, I'm hopeful, and again, we don't know what this totally looks like. I'm hopeful that not only can I offer it as AP support in math, but maybe it's opened up where English teachers can give me some, and I can offer optional stuff. Like, I don't know the English content, but I, can I offer them some practice and answers? And I know how AP grading some works, that I can offer them support in not just the math, but other AP courses. So we have an academic lab right now geared just for AP, so kids can, can go in there. Now, I'm looking at scheduling too, like, you know, mine is going to be fifth hour, but what happens if they have it first hour or whatever? I'm, I'm going to be flexible with whatever, if they want to come in and I can offer them before school, whatever I would do during that lab, just because they don't have the time. I have some flexibility after school tutoring. I can still give them the optional information, even if their time doesn't fit that exact moment.
And that sounds, that, that is specific to the math department, but I mean, will that be applicable to the other APs?
Generally speaking, there's not going to be as many of those opportunities. I believe that when we had talked about it too, that the teachers that have, I think, um, one of my first days, teachers has it as well. Teachers that have it are going to be in collaboration with the teachers that don't have it. To be able to provide some resources, like, it might be our weekly check-in document, or it might be something that they're going to share with them. That they can gather that information to keep things fresh for kids as they're going through it. Um, the conversation came up a ton in our, in our transition process and talking to other schools. And the big thing that, that all our schools always came back to was is, there was a great reduction of, there's a, a great reduction in learning loss compared to what we'd see over the, over the summer, right? And so students that take a bunch of classes and then they go into summer, there's a great, greater learning loss there than we see from trimester, end of trimester two, two, uh, two or three, um, or, I should say, two and a half month period to that AP exam. But the learning loss wasn't very drastic in that regard. And our AP teachers have, have different methods that they've used in the past as well. Where they've met with kids for a study session in the morning once a week, or they've, they've had kids come to tutoring, going through that process. Those things will still continue. We're hopeful that those things will provide the same, but at the same token, we don't know. We don't know what's going to-
I mean, it'll be a benefit if you didn't track the trends, right?
Yes, yep. And so that's where the data comes into play, is that we're going to get great data on this. But the feedback that we got from the schools that have gone through this have said that they did not see a drastic drop in those scores going through, so.
Thanks.
Yep.
Um, under ACT data, can you, and if you could do a scatter plot rather than just, I mean, that would be easier to see because, you know, most kids aren't looking for a nineteenth, a very ACT test. But having a scatter plot and being able to see, okay, clearly there are students that are not planning to go to college and clearly there are some that are, and where do we fall in that range? Um, and then last year, we talked about when you gave the, how many students got the different grades, A, B, C, D, and F. Um, it was broken down by A, B, C, D, and F. And this year it's A through C, D, and F. I'm just curious as to, at least on our sheet here, if you look at, um, page three, it has, it's not listed in that sort of, so I'm just curious why.
Not an intentional omission, we just, so you're looking for A through D?
Well, last year you had it broken down how these-
Like number based, similar things happen.
How many As, how many Bs, how many Cs.
We have that, I-
And then this year, it's A through C is one big clump, or at least that's what it's on, on page three, rather than having it broken down. So just, I mean, I guess, sure, just for knowledge sake.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, we good? Ready for the last push? Okay. All right. So I promised that we used a little bit more analysis on the school report card. Side-by-side comparison, on the left, you see our school report card from last year, the forty-eight point five. School report card from this year, the fifty-four point six. Even though I had shared in the board update, I, that this was a six point one, um, score increase of our overall score. What does that mean in comparison? So when I took all of the growth in the overall composite scores for the school, for the high schools in the state of Wisconsin, and showed how far they moved, this places in the top twenty in the state of Wisconsin. Out of four hundred, five hundred, was it five hundred plus high schools that had those scoring on this, right? We were in the top twenty in the state of Wisconsin for growth from our score from the previous year. Even of itself, that's awesome, that's great, that's positive, right? But we wanted to dig deeper into that and, and kind of break that down a little bit to see exactly what that means. This may be a minor point to, to state though, but last year, right, when we owned where, where we were, and I don't remember quite how it was spelled, but it was, it was not shared great. We only ranked higher than thirteen high schools in the state of Wisconsin in our overall composite score. That's pushed over to forty-seven. It's still not great, right? But, but the increase that we've seen in that growth process is a powerful piece for the direction that we're moving. When we analyze the report card, then we try to compare it as well compared to schools that are like us in different ways. So we do different comparisons. One of them is a demographic analysis, kind of based upon schools that have similar dynamics, like setting socioeconomic status of their student body and race ethnicity of their student body, and maybe types of locations, rural versus urban, in, in going through that. There's a lot of data here, right, and you can get lost in all this process. But the big thing for you is, for you to see is the comparison piece that we look at. And so from our standpoint, our overall composite score, right, places is kind of in the middle, wish range, lower middle range of the schools that you see here. But the part I want to focus on is where our achievement scored, so where our students achieve in going through the testing that they take. Hayward High School scored seventy-three overall. They had the highest achievement scores of this demographic group of, of schools. We were second at a fifty-seven point two, okay? Well, then you go, okay, well, why is our score so much lower? Well, then you go to the other target areas or the other spot areas. Growth is an area where we struggle. And it's why I talked about, why I met with the DPI last week, to try to get more information as to why, why we're not doing as well in growth and to understand growth a little bit. I'm going to come back to the growth piece of, um, after the second slide that I go through here. And I just want you to look at comparison though. All those achievement scores and you look through some of the different schools that have similar dynamics to us, we're doing very well in our overall achievement for all of our students. And that positive piece is also tied into, we have the second highest in our, in our on-track to graduation. So we're preparing our students for, for graduation with graduation rates staying high. We have, um, attendance rates that are above the state average in going through that. And as you look at that piece, right, the two focus areas then for us, growth and target group outcomes. Target group outcomes refer to the students who scored in your lowest twenty-fifth percentile of the previous year. And they take those students and they say, well, what did you do with those students to the way they scored the next year? Okay? In that breakdown though, there's still a lot of gray areas to exactly what those numbers mean. And I can tell you in having those conversations with the DPI, there's a lot of gray areas in, in how they understand what those numbers mean as well. I'll get to that point in a second, in a second though. Another area to compare to was schools that have similar school dynamics. So these are other union districts in the state of Wisconsin, okay? For sake of time convenience, I was just pulling as quickly as I could to get, to get out here and not take too much time into this. But overall scores, right, seeing where we sit in that, in that process, the achievement and growth scores for some of these schools, right, are, are higher. But we also see some of these, our achievement and growth scores being lower in going through that. The difference with all of these schools, their demographic populations are completely different than ours. Um, I believe the highest level of socioeconomic, um, students that are economically disadvantaged, is the way it's written on the report card, was like thirty percent for any of these schools. And ours is at forty-eight percent, or forty-seven point something, I think, where we're at. And so in going through this process, you look at, where do you compare with other schools that are like us in the dynamics of the school? I don't know, because the DPI couldn't explain this to me either, but is a thirty-one point eight in growth at Union Grove, does that mean they're doing something bad? Or is it, is it a union school district then? Is it how they measure union school districts based upon how they measure K-12 systems? So when I asked some of those questions to the DPI, they talked about this idea of what's called a value-added model. So they don't take straight score for score. They try to take factors that they say, school districts are responsible for, and things that are just out of your control. Something that's out of your control would be like the socioeconomic status of your student. So they try to strip away things that they think the school has no impact on. And then they create a projection score for where they feel a student in a certain group should fall. So let's say, let's say this group is, um, students with disabilities that are also economically disadvantaged. And they take this group of students and they give a projection score of where those students they think should grow to in the next year. Depending on where your students in that category fit on this scale, right, will determine whether or not you have high growth, low growth, or no growth. And so they give you a score on it. But the scores are rated on a, on a zero to six scale. And it's supposed to be a bell curve. And so every school is supposed to fit in there, the three being average. And as I, I asked and I worked through this, and it's something probably where I need Ms. Tyler to help me with like standard deviations and, and all the breakdowns of how this, this, this comes apart. But they talked about the idea that they're shooting this natural bell curve and the majority of our schools should fall in that three, that three range. Our growth scores in math were slightly below the average level in the, in the high two points fives to two point sevens area. Our EOA growth scores were still kind of low, we're in the, we're in the one range around there. But when comparing that to other schools, they couldn't tell me exactly what would drive the change. What would make that change as, as, as much as it would somewhere else? They also couldn't tell me why, if our achievement scores are higher than all these other schools that have higher growth, does that mean our kids are coming to us at a higher level than they're coming at these other schools? And, and they couldn't, they couldn't pinpoint that either. They said that they wouldn't accurately be able to make that statement. So as we continue to dig into this, that was conversation one. And I'm going to have many more, because I want to understand this at a greater level, because we all up to each other as we go through the processes to determine, are we doing things that actually drive the change we want to see? Or are we just doing things and we're hoping for, for great results? And I wish it was a lot clearer, but if it's not clear to me, it's not going to be clear to, to any of our parents because they're not done sitting in the, in the academic world on a daily basis. And I can tell you, it's not clear to most of the administrators that I talk to. And I can tell you, it wasn't clear to one of the DPI people that was helping me set up this meeting, that she didn't understand. She's like, I need to sit in this meeting to listen to how these, as she called them, data nerds, break this stuff down. But they contract with a company that creates this value-added model for the state of Wisconsin. And so I asked her, I said, have any of those people in the value-added model ever been north of Highway Eight? Have they ever come to Monocro? Have they ever seen what it's like to have a union district in the Northwoods? And the guy said, well, no, they don't, a union district's not accounted into that value-added model. And so as we work, work through some of those pieces, I just, I'm trying to expose some of that thought process as well to how life is different at Lakeland as a Northwood school in a union district. So that's just kind of a quick overview of where the school report card stuff is at. Questions? All right. And we're done. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time, thank you.
You guys got that one, great.
Good. Next up, agenda, board committee and board liaison reports. First, you can talk about the reports, what levels of plans that someone has worked up, so it's like, I don't need to go to the pen anywhere?
Okay. Usually that one's maybe those meetings we do.
Uh, charter school meetings, I know that the Lakeland Area Consortium on Autism has a meeting this Wednesday at nine o'clock. And the next charter school meeting is going to be in January, isn't it? Our policy committee?
Policy committee, Matt, but we have nothing to forward to the board. Lots of discussions.
What was it, so, so?
Yes.
Okay, next is the ad hoc facilities testing committee.
Um, I was there, who else wants to talk about it? Is that the Nexus?
No, yes. Uh, I was there, I greeted everyone coming into the room. Uh, Steve had a great idea about putting this committee together. We had over thirty people there. And, uh, a lot of questions, conversation, Nexus did provide a report. One thing, you know, I wanted to make sure that the committee realizes, even, even though Nexus did bring up referendum frequently, that wasn't the goal of this particular committee, you know, and, and Steve brought that out too. Okay, we want you to see what our needs are. And maybe you can give us ideas on what should be our priorities and how do we move forward to financially afford these things. Uh, either be within our budget, uh, or potentially referendum down the road. But it wasn't meant to be a push for a referendum. I, I contacted all of my people who attended and they said, ultimately, it was very educational and there's a lot of work to do, so.
Yeah, and I think just echo what Sean said. Um, I think towards the end, it started to spin into the, how are we going to pay for it? And before we got to the, what do we need to do? And I think we just need to back up and reaffirm that. First step is, what's a list of projects that are viable and needed? Second, let's prioritize these. The last thing we talk about is, okay, if these are the projects, these are what we want to do, how do you pay for them? Because, you know, if you come up with a short list, how you pay for it is very different than if you come up with a real long list. And we're too far away from that.
Dean?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Next is the consent agenda items. As you see in our list there, I do need a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented by administration. Roll call?
Mr. Boards?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Fink?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Aye.
Mrs. Noam? Mrs. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Ullman?
Yes. Next is the action item, and we've already done the eight-two. We're going to get into the review and approve the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar.
Um, recommendation will be not to approve it tonight, but to review it. Uh, but it's under action, and if you want to approve it, that's fine. Uh, I don't know that it's ready. Um, we've had multiple discussions and I don't know how many drafts of the calendar. This is, I guess, our first official draft. I think the biggest thing you're going to-
I think the biggest thing you're gonna see is moving our PD days from Thursdays to Mondays. Still having some conversation on what those will exactly look like. The other thing that you'll see as a change is moving, or not moving, but having professional development on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, the two days before Thanksgiving. So students would have off that day, if you're familiar with the area. Those are not real strong attendance days for a lot of our students. But we'll keep staff and work through those days. We have a date in February and a date in March that are listed now as professional development days. As we look at those professional development days, I also get concerned about snow days. Something I've seen another district do is, first, snow day is not made up. Second, snow day would be made up on February sixteenth. Third, snow day would not be made up. Fourth, snow day would be made up on March sixth, and we still have April to go yet. And fifth one would not be made up, and anything over five would be up to the, given that we have the minutes. So I'm kind of familiar with that kind of format, where every other day, I'm trying to build a couple into the calendar. You have some that are built in that are just forgiven, because you have minutes in your calendar. Yeah, what else did we, did mine missing anything? Big shift was the Mondays, the late starts, the days of Thanksgiving, shifting the days to Monday.
Are we close with the other grade schools?
That was my question. Common calendar?
As close as we can be.
Can't do that.
Getting all five school districts to agree on a common calendar is incredibly difficult. We have general tenants, we will start school on the same day, we will all have the same two weeks at Christmas, we will all have the same spring break, we will all be done with students by June fifth. What else in common? We will have a common day on January nineteenth. A lot of that will be for eighth grade registration at the high school. We have a common date in October. I think that's it. We sat down and agreed on some parameters, not exactly days through it, but we did agree on some.
Any other questions? Very good, thank you. Next is the review and approval of the R V A contract for twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
I talked a little bit about this at the committee of the whole meeting. What's in your packet is a sixty-six oh three oh one with R V A. R V A is the Rural Virtual Academy. The fiscal oversight is the Bedford School District. Basically, they set up with virtual access fees, one to four students is a flat rate, five to nine. They have affiliated shared instructional staff credit. Long story short, is many districts in, R V A have district staff that teach remotely to students during specific times. If we have a really good math teacher who's teaching AP, what does she teach, AP help? We could broadcast that over the R V A. We would then get credit for that instructor for that period, which would reduce our costs. I think before we get too heavily into some of those areas, we need to become a vested member, but as an affiliated member, we'd be able to take advantage of those fees. But as far as broadcasting some of our classes over, we have an opportunity to recover some of those costs. The other thing is that district connect, district connect fee is based on students, number of students in a course, if they will offer harsh staff access to some online curricular options. So some of our, a great example is, we have a math teacher in Colby, he used the R V A curriculum, online curriculum, but it was all digital, and he was able to adapt his curriculum so that if you were moving from a semester to a trimester, you're able to shift the timeframe in your curriculum and reload it online. If you want to take units and flip them around, English teachers like things, it's just all drop and drag. Some real little options there, it's hard to perfect, that kind of comes with the R V A, because that's the curriculum software that they use, they just give us access to it for a reduced fee. Bottom line for us, if you look at our anticipated enrollment for next year with students coming out of elementaries into Lakeland High School, we're gonna save about forty-five million dollars, because we get to claim the state aid, we pay out to R V A for their services. I think it's a good option, it connects the kids with our district. There's a lot more than R V A is, our support centers. So if we were to open up a support center in our building, we would get a credit for, there's just all kinds of twists that we have, but it's about developing them, the virtual school where they become partner in our online instruction, instead of a kid just opening, rolling out, and then they're gone, and we never see them again.
Do we be a partner for the count for them, right?
Yes, and the, yep. And that's where we save the money, is our state aid for that student is less than the cost of them later. Students typically have the option of an L U H S diploma or an R V A diploma. If they want our diploma, they have to pass the same graduation requirements by course and by credit that we have in our graduation policy.
Okay, now I need a motion to approve the sixty-six point zero three zero one affiliated member agreement, shared virtual learning services between Rural Virtual Academy and Lakeland Union High School, is presented beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shaw? Mrs. Fink?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Boards?
Yes. Thank you. Review and approve the treasurer's report in monthly financials.
So everything is there as per usual, all the reports, no issues. Food service dashboard is missing December, but that'll be up there soon, and you can go back at any time, because that document's live. The project has a cost summary sheet attached to it towards the bottom, so if you want to check that out, you can. I'm gonna guess we're gonna be somewhere in that three point four, three point five million total. We are running behind, they've struggled to get guys to come up and put the brick on the ticket booth, and I literally have an email out to them, as does Joe, and Jose is chasing down the electrician for some of the final sound system pieces that we ordered to make sure that there's good connectivity down on the field up to the booth. But I would imagine we are gonna stretch into January, unfortunately. So we'll keep you updated as those, as you can tell, like, I've been taking pictures when work gets done, but there's just been issues, whether it's bricks that aren't the same size that they can't get, or it's the foundation that had been ripped out and put back in, or whatever. It's just slowly coming along, so.
We won't use it this winter.
No, no, our goal is to try to be done by Christmas though, so it's like ready to roll out in the spring, and I don't know that we're gonna hit that goal, it's, it's looking like January at this juncture, so.
Okay, motion to approve the checks procurement card transactions from November first, twenty twenty-four to November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Fink? Mr. Justice? Mrs. Knoll? Mrs. Schuman? Mr. Peterson? Mrs. Beck? Mr. Boards? Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Ullman?
Yes. Okay, next is to review and approve the purchase of AEDs for student activities and field trips.
So those ended up kind of getting, there is, there is no top summer sheet tonight, because we ended up coming in under ten thousand. So at that point, we didn't mess with the agenda, but it was under ten thousand total, and we should be good to go, given some of the recent incidents this weekend. It is a good thing to keep on top of and maintain those things. So there, we're gonna get the backpacks set up so that there are AEDs traveling with kids to various places, and we should be in a good spot with that. They've had nursing grant money for the last two, two or three years now, I think three years actually, at CISA that they have been trying to get people to spend, that was given out as COVID money through DHS, and it just keeps not getting spent by various districts, so they kind of reopen that, let districts apply for a mini grant, the deadline was quite a while ago. But again, we just applied for it and picked up a few thousand bucks to help pay for it too, so. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next is to review, approve, purchase of replacement steamer for food service.
This is probably the most serious agenda item tonight, and without it, we can't have tacos. Quite frankly, I think that'd be very disruptive, so needless to say, I think we've gotten our money out of it, it is probably, from what Randy and I can tell, twenty-seven or twenty-eight years old. It's, it is a steamer we use for vegetables, we use it for taco shells, it gets used in a lot of different things that are on our menu every week. So they've had inconsistent use of it. One of the, there's basically two different boxes that do the steaming. One of them has been inconsistent, and the other one works like ninety-nine percent of the time. So getting this replaced, again, will be a good thing for helping folks in the kitchen, as well as making sure that everything runs on time and is safe and all that good stuff. So we did not put tons of feelers out there, because the ability to get repairs on it is limited. The primary two people coming into the area are Hobart and General Parts, and we've been using a lot of general parts for everything from the broken freezer that we just had to ovens last year and and things along the way. So we kind of stuck with that philosophy, because they've worked well with Bolter, and that is why you see one quote from Bolter. I did look up, like I said, another individual, but, or sorry, another company, that Webster On Store, but by the time they give you their surprise installer, they were still over the price anyways, so.
Very good, we need a motion to approve the replacement of the food service steamer with approximate cost of twenty-three thousand five hundred through Bolter LLC. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll? Mrs. Schuman? Mr. Peterson? Mrs. Beck? Mr. Boards? Mr. Shaw? Mrs. Fink? Mr. Ullman?
Yes. Next is to review and approve the creation of a formal club, the ice fishing club.
My understanding, in order to have a club become an approved club, if you want to call it that, it has been in existence and sustained itself for a couple of years, and I'm assuming that's happened, right? Been around a while. I, I want to compliment whoever, whoever set up the process. Too often I've seen schools that will get a parent group or a very vocal management and they want to do an activity, that their kids graduate, the volunteers kind of go away, and the club kind of found ears, and you have an activity, talent, pay coaches, and all of those pieces. I, I like the idea of, why don't you start out with some volunteers, let's show us that it's a viable program, do that for a couple of years, and then we'll support the program. Has a formal club within the school and ice fishing, so I think that's a good thing.
Levi, is that Mark Benson?
What's that?
Is that Mark Benson that's involved in that? Who's running that?
Matt Dassell.
All right, we need a motion to approve the creation of the ice fishing as a formal activity club, beginning with the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and as recommended by the district administrator. Discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Knoll? Mrs. Schuman? Mr. Peterson? Mrs. Beck? Mr. Boards? Mr. Shaw? Mrs. Fink? Mr. Justice? Mr. Ullman?
Yes. Before I get a motion to go into closed session, I would wish everybody a great happy holiday and a great Christmas, and hope Santa's good to you all. All right? I want to thank the presenters of the tri semester. I'll report, that was excellent information, and hopefully we continue to see positive things. I need a motion to move to closed session? I'll prepare to say aye, most. As you please, we'll be in closed session, do you want to take a five minute break? Thank you.
How is that the high school report card? Is it the district?